Tonight I'd like to welcome Pastor Trent Cornwell from Vision Baptist Church, who will lead us in our invocation.
Please feel free to join me in prayer. Lord, most gracious, Heavenly Father, I thank you for an opportunity to be here tonight and to raise my family in a community that allows me to admit my existence in you and my utter dependence upon you. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the bright future of this community that is seen in young men like Mr. Jason Nguyen, the Eagle Scout, that will be honored tonight. I thank you for men and a generation of young men like him that are coming up in this community this holiday season. Lord, we are ever so mindful of Jesus Emmanuel and that how you took on a robe of flesh and took on humanity, and you were God with us, and you came down here and lived out your life and felt the trials that we feel, Lord. And we're ever so mindful of the fact that you're concerned about every aspect of our lives, or as that you'll be with council members tonight as they'll make decisions. I pray that you'll give them the wisdom and the discernment that they need. And we thank for the access that we have unto you in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, December 21st to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
I got it. I got that sheet here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'd be happy to call roll for the December 21st, 2009, regular meeting. However, I'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items on the first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment in either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Jill Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lutz?
Here.
Councilmember Bern Huet?
Here.
Councilmember Tina Diaversa?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tark?
Here.
Would everyone please rise?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome you here tonight to the city of Milton. We've got a pretty heavy docket tonight, so I just ask everybody to be efficient as we can as we move forward. So thanks for being here. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
The next item is approval of the meeting agenda, which is Agenda Item Number 091002. Mayor and council staff have several recommendations for this tonight. Under new business, staff would like to add the following transition contracts. Number one, approval of a supplement to the Sun Guard Public Sector Incorporated Application Service Provider Agreement. Number two, approval of a transition agreement by and between the city of Milton, Georgia and Optech Minnet LLC. Number three, approval of a transition agreement by and between the city of Milton, Georgia and Safebuilt, Georgia Incorporated for Building Department Services. Number four, approval of a transition agreement by and between the city of Milton, Georgia and Georgia Management Agency Incorporated Doing Business as Roadworks. Number five, approval of a transition agreement by and between the city of Milton, Georgia and Low Engineers LLC for Engineering Services. Under the zoning agenda, staff recommends deferral of RZ 0904 ordinance to create Article 13 of the Milton zoning ordinance to establish a historic preservation commission in the city of Milton to provide for the designation of historic properties or historic districts, to provide for issuance of certificates of appropriateness, to provide for an appeals procedure to repeal conflicting ordinances, and for other purposes to the January 18th, 2010 council meeting. Add the subject of personnel to the executive session, and under staff reports, defer the discussion on the traffic calming policy.
Any other items that you would consider? Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lutz. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to add real quick that the, from our staff's perspective, the request for the deferral of the historic preservation ordinance comes with some information that we received today. As you recall, that item was sent to the planning commission as well as to the design review board. The one body that hasn't had a chance to review that document after the recommendations of both of those boards is the originating committee, or the Historic Preservation Committee. Our hope is that we can convene that committee and allow them to look at the comments of both the planning commission and the design review board to bring that document back in front of you at the next zoning agenda, which is January the 18th.
Okay. You have a comment? A motion in a second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess I'm supposed to say that's unanimous.
That's your name. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation, both from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Mayor Leon Cole.
My name is Leon Cole, and I have lived at 16700 Birmingham Highway for over 40 years, having taught in Northfordton schools for over 30 of those years in what is presently the cities of Sandy Springs, Roswell, Alpharetta, Milton, and John's Creek. During this time, I have seen many county and city government-directed changes in these areas, some of a positive nature and some which have had a negative effect on the land and its people. This leads me to the reason for my being here tonight. I wish to express my sincere appreciation to Councilor Tina Diaversa for her admirable service to the city of Milton. Councilor Diaversa, you always served your city with preparation and understanding, and when appropriate, supported your opinion on an issue with substance and clarity. You seem to always let the rules of the city guide your vote on city issues with the understanding that these rules were established by yourself and your council colleagues and therefore should be adhered to. Your personal demeanor in conducting the city's business was as it should be. You never criticized or degraded a fellow councilor who did not think as you did. Instead, you simply let your expressed judgment and actions reflect not only rules in place but also citizen views of political promises that cause citizens to vote the city into reality in the first place. Councilor Diaversa, your philosophy of proper growth in proper areas and protection of present AG1 land will be missed. Thank you again for your service.
Mayor Scott Stahusky?
My name is Scott Stahusky. I live at 3154 Chippingwood Court in the city of Milton. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I have the privilege tonight of speaking to you as the vice president of the Board of Directors of Hopewell Youth Association. When I last appeared before you on August 17th, it was to request your support for an amendment to the Facility Use Agreement for the travel teams used in the memorial park. This amendment was created, supported by Hopewell and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, then approved by all of you, the council, to provide a solution to the concern that there would be overcrowding at the park in the spring season for 2010. I'm reporting this evening that our regular registration closed last week, and our preliminary registration numbers are lower than last year. As of last week, we have 593 players, which is 77 less than last spring, and we're planning to have 56 teams, which is four less than last spring. As an aside, when this amendment was proposed and approved, there was talk that there may be as many as 10 additional teams in the park, and in the nine- and 10-year-old age group, there was a projection for 185 players and only 130 have signed up this year. Although we never know all the reasons for these fluctuations, we propose that attrition and competition have impacted registration. Attrition, both the kids moving in and out of the city, as well as the loss of three travel teams from the park when the travel program looked to be in jeopardy last summer, and competition of other sports, particularly lacrosse, seems to be taking away a lot of spring players at times. It's important to note that since we've operated under the two agreements that we have in place, the Hopewell Youth Association has paid directly to the city over $30,000 and has paid into the Hopewell Youth Association Park Reinvestment Fund over $60,000. These monies totaling almost $100,000 have accumulated and have not been reinvested into the park as required by the agreement. As the spring season begins, we look forward to delivering another successful baseball program for our kids. In addition, we look forward to working with the city staff and the incoming Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you. Kim Horn.
Good evening. My name is Kim Horn. I live at 415 Wade Glenn Court, and I'm here echoing Leon Cole's sentiments and wanted to say thank you very much to Tina. Tina has been a tremendous asset to the city of Milton. She's worked tirelessly for the last three years, and even before that, when she was on the steering committee. Tina has a long list of accomplishments while being a city council member. Her accomplishments will not be forgotten. She has been a true friend and a dedicated member of this community, and we will certainly miss her and hope the best for you, Tina, in the future. But all your efforts have not been forgotten.
And that concludes the public comment.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Consent agenda, I'm sorry. Approval of the December 7th, 2009, regular meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 091003. An approval of financial statements for the period ending November 2009, Agenda Item 091004.
I have a motion in a second on consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lutz, second by Councilmember Tark to approve the consent agenda as read. Call in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
What's your names?
Your names. Okay, I'm going to move on to reports of presentation. City clerk, please sound the item.
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to take this one from you for a second, if you don't mind, because I've got a staff presentation that I would like to make tonight, kind of echoing some of the comments, Tina, that we heard from some of our citizens. I can tell you that the staff has enjoyed the privilege of working with you for the time that we have. I think that we've accomplished a lot of good things. I hope that you're not a stranger to the city of Milton nor to its city hall, and if there's ever anything that the staff here at city hall can do for you, we are a phone call or a stop-by away, and we've got just a little something to send you with. I know it's not much, but we spend the government's money, and we can only spend so much. But if the mayor and council would join me representing the staff in presenting Tina with an appreciation plaque tonight, I'd appreciate it.
And I also want to add, from my perspective, gosh, the last three years Tina has spent untold hours and done a lot of work with the city of Milton, and prior to the last three
month, I'm happy.
years prior to us becoming a city was a big part.
That's why I'm putting it in today, so all is good.
So she has done a huge benefit and been honored and proud to work with her, and I If anyone else in council would like to say something, can you?
Thank you, Mayor.
hope you stay involved and continue all the things that you've done for Milton.
I just wanted to obviously convey my thanks to a council member and also to a citizen,
So, thank you, Tina. Any one to step forward and present this?
somebody that has dedicated her time unselfishly, with intellect, with professionalism, with a dedication that has really been unmatched, and she has indeed accomplished so much on behalf of all citizens in Milton. And I do and am confident that she will continue to be engaged and involved, and we need you to continue to be involved and engaged. And it has truly been an honor to serve with you and to help to be a part of the future of the city, and we just cannot thank you enough. And God bless you and Merry Christmas, and may you always be involved with the city of Milton, because your accomplishments are many. Thank you very much.
Okay. This next item is I want to present a proclamation to Eagle Scout Jason Nguyen. And I was honored to be able to attend part of the ceremony at his house, but I had told him and let his parents know I wanted to make a formal announcement, proclamation here at the city. So I'm going to step down and ask Jason to step up to the microphone. I'm going to give him this proclamation.
I tell you, it's a great honor for not only me as the mayor, but our entire city, council, staff, citizens, to have young men like this in our city. So I know his mom and dad and family are proud, and we're proud to have you here, too. Whereas the city of Milton recognizes the importance of developing fine character and personal quality in our younger generations, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America have long been recognized as one of our preeminent organizations for fostering the best qualities in our young men, and whereas within the Boy Scouts, the highest honor that could be achieved is the earning of the Eagle Scout honor, which is only awarded after many years of hard work and dedication to the ideals of the organization, and whereas the recipients of this honor represent a collective hope for the bright future of this nation in their hands, and whereas Milton resident Jason Nguyen distinguished himself by achieving his Eagle Scout on November 22nd, 2009. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton hereby proclaim and applaud Eagle Scout Jason Nguyen as an exemplary member of the Milton community and the state of Georgia, and do urge all citizens to join in his celebration, given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 21st day of December 2009. What an honor.
Wait, wait, wait. Mom and dad want to come up?
Yes. Yeah, let me see.
Give them a getup, and watch your way down, oh god. Okay. Next item that we've got, I want to also give a proclamation to some people in our audience here. Mr. Zach Middlebrooks, who had approached me a while back, along with Greg Cabares, make sure I pronounce it right, with the idea of having a run to raise money for the city, and they graciously recommended we call it the Milton Mayor's Run. So these guys were instrumental in putting together the first annual Milton Mayor's Run, and we collectively had decided to use the proceeds to go to help fund development of our parks, specifically the Birmingham Park. So both Greg and Zach are here tonight. I want to present them with proclamation, and I believe they may have a check that they're going to present to the city. So I certainly just can't say enough how much we appreciate the time and efforts of citizens that come forward with a great idea and really make something happen. So all I had to do was get out there and run. But these guys really put in a lot of time and effort beforehand, and we hope to, we have pretty decent turnout, but we hope to next year have a much bigger turnout and hopefully it'll grow every year. So again, I'm going to come down and read this proclamation, and then after I do, if I could get council to come down.
Whereas the city of Milton believes that active citizen participation in community events is the hallmark of a vibrant and healthy community, and whereas the general promotions of wellness not only benefits the individual participants by promoting fitness, but also draws citizens together for a common purpose, supporting the growth and nurture of a sense of community in Milton, and whereas in 2009, several volunteers got together to initiate and promote the inaugural Milton Mayor's Run, thereby encouraging these important ideals of community and wellness, and whereas many volunteered their times and talents to establish and then see through a successful event on the morning of Saturday, October 17th, 2009, and whereas community members Zach Middlebrooks and Dr. Greg Cabera, among others, spent many hours working with the city to plan and promote this community event. And whereas Brooklyn Joe's Pizza and Milton High School Beta Club, in addition to North Point Pediatrics, Run and See Georgia, CVS Caremark, Metro Group Development, S and M E, the Foresight Group, and Roasters serve as critical supporting sponsors for this event, and whereas Milton recognizes the importance of establishing new traditions in our young city and appreciate the multiple benefits this event brought to our community by the cultural and entrepreneurship of some of our citizens. We, now therefore we, the mayor and city council of Milton hereby proclaim December 21st, 2009, as the inaugural Mayor's Run Volunteer Recognition Day, and do urge all citizens to join in the celebration. This is given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 21st day of December 2009.
I just want to say one thing. I want to clarify one thing, that the mayor was out there, that I'm not quite sure I called that run. Just to clarify, I'm not quite sure that was run. But I just want to thank the mayor and my buddy Zach for helping me, you know, helping us get through this. And every year, the first year's always the hardest, but every year after that, we're going to just keep building and building it, and we get the city council behind it and everybody behind it. You know, Alpharetta boasts that they have the 10K race, their mayor run, we can beat them, we can do it. We just try to take it one race at a time, so I really appreciate it. And we did raise $2,300. That's me. Hopefully it's a solid amount. But thank you guys very, very much. Appreciate it.
But I heard that I think Tina...
She did run. Yeah. I've never seen you. With the doll. With the handoff. It's only you. You won. You won.
We don't talk about the age.
Okay. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. You got it.
It's nice to hold trail, Barry.
It is, but next year we're going to get it out there. We had enough people just for the trail. We want 500, 500, 500, we're going to get it out of the road. We're going to be on that street. You help us, and we can help that place.
Again, thank you to our sponsors and Greg and Zach and all of our volunteers for everything you do. This is very important stuff. Get this out, going on the right foot. We'll move on to the first presentation. Will the city clerk please sound the item?
Mayor, first presentation is one item tonight. Approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 municipal court by adding a new section entitled the Pre-Trial Intervention and Diversion Program to be administered by the city of Milton Solicitor's Office for the purpose of ending the repeat offenses of theft by shoplifting, underage possession of alcohol, disorderly conduct, and other miscellaneous misdemeanor and traffic offenses through the education of eligible defendants and for other purposes. Agenda item 091005.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second on consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lutz, second by Councilmember Tark to approve the consent agenda as read. Call in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I'm going to get that right next time. I'm going to ask the question.
Hearing, uh, it's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to the alcohol beverage license application, public hearing. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Aldi Incorporated DBA, Aldi Incorporated, Georgia, number 30, located at 12990 Highway 9 North, Suite 107, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is Scott Corningate for Retail Wine Malt Beverage, Agenda Item 091006, Stacey Ingles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant has adhered to all the requirements of the ordinance, and staff recommends approval of the alcohol beverage license application.
Okay. Could there be public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Does the council have any questions for Ms. Ingles or staff? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I have a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'll put, go ahead. My favorite, one of my favorite stores. Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Aldi Inc., doing business as Aldi Inc. in Georgia, number 30, located at 12,000, 12,990 Highway 9 North, Suite 107, Milton, Georgia. Applicant is Scott Corningate for Retail Wine Malt Beverage, Agenda Item Number 091006. And I'll second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, second by Councilmember Bales. Is there any council discussion? Hearing, no.
All those in favor, the most few, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
City clerk, will you please sound the next item?
Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Sushi USA DBA Magic Walk and Sushi Bar, located at 12890 Highway 9, Suite 140, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is, I'm going to spell it so I don't mispronounce it, G U O F U W U.
Well, get Bernie's, Mr. Johnson. Go ahead. Uh, I'd just like to say one thing, I want to clarify one thing, that the mayor was out there, that I'm not quite sure I called that a run.[244.01][244.01](laughter) Just to clarify, I'm not quite sure that was run. But, uh, I just want to thank, uh, the mayor and my buddy Zach for, um, helping me, you know, helping us get through this. And every year, the first year's always the hardest, but every year after that, we're gonna just keep building and building it, and we get the city council behind it and everybody behind it, you know, Alpharetta boasts that they have the ten K raise, their mayor run, we can beat 'em, we can do it. We just gotta take it one, one race at a time, so, I really appreciate it, and we made, we did raise twenty-three hundred dollars.[279.33][279.33](applause) That's me, hopefully it's been a while since I've seen that. But, thank you guys very, very much, appreciate it.
But I heard, but I think...
She did run, yeah? I've never seen you. With it all, with your hand off. It's on you. You won, you won, you won.
We don't talk about the H.
Okay.[299.77][299.77](laughter) So I really appreciate it.
(inaudible).
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. You got it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Is it nice on trail, Barry?
It is, but next year we're gonna get it out there on the road. We had enough people just for the trail. We want five hundred, we have some more, we're gonna get it out of the road.
So that we can travel.
you do. It's, uh, very important stuff. Get this out, going on the, on the right foot. We'll move on to the first presentation. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Mayor, first presentation is one item tonight, approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four Municipal Court by adding a new section entitled the Pre-Trial Intervention and Diversion Program to be administered by the City of Milton Solicitor's Office for the purpose of ending the repeat offenses of theft by shoplifting, underage, possession of alcohol, disorderly conduct, and other miscellaneous misdemeanor and traffic offenses through the education of eligible defendants and for other purposes. Agenda item zero-nine, one-zero-zero-five.
I have a motion in second.
I'll make a motion, mayor, to approve, uh, the first presentation, an ordinance to amend Chapter Four of Municipal Court by adding a new section entitled the Pre-Trial Intervention and Diversion Program to be administered by the City of Milton Solicitor's Office for the purpose of ending the repeat offenses of theft by shoplifting, underage, possession of alcohol, disorderly conduct, and other miscellaneous misdemeanor and traffic offenses through the education of eligible defendants and for other purposes. Agenda item number zero-nine dash one-zero-zero-five.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Deversa and a second by Councilmember Thurman. Almost there? Aye. You opposed?
I'm gonna get that right next time, I'm gonna ask the question.
Hearing, uh, it's unanimous.[473.71][473.71](laughter) Okay, we're gonna move on to the Alcohol Beverage License Application Public Hearing. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Aldi Incorporated DBA, Aldi Incorporated, Georgia, number thirty, located at one-two-nine-nine-zero, Highway Nine North, Suite one-oh-seven, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is Scott Corningate for Retail Wine Malt Beverage. Agenda item zero-nine, one-zero-zero-six, Stacey Ingles.
Good evening, mayor and council. The applicant has, um, adhered to all the requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval of the alcohol beverage license, um, like, application.
Okay. Could there be public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Ingles or staff? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I have a motion in the second?
Mayor, I'll put, go ahead. My favorite, one of my favorite stores, approval of an alcohol, uh, beverage license application for Aldi Inc., doing business as Aldi Inc. in Georgia, number thirty, located at twelve-hundred, twelve-thousand-nine-ninety, Highway Nine North, Suite one-zero-seven, Milton, Georgia. Applicant is Scott Corningate for Retail Wine Malt Beverage. Agenda item number zero-nine, one-zero-zero-six. And I'll second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Deversa, second by Councilmember Bales. Is there any council discussion? Hearing, no.
All those in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
City clerk, will you please sound the next item?
Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Sushi, USA DBA Magic Walk and Sushi Bar, located at one-two-eight-nine-zero, Highway Nine, Suite one-forty, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is, I'm gonna spell it so I don't mispronounce it, G-U-O-F-U-W-U, for consumption on the premises wine and malt beverage. Stacey Ingles?
This applicant has also followed all the requirements of the, of the ordinance and staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. City Clerk?
Oh, uh, there is no public comment.
Does council have any questions? None, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item. A motion in second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number zero-nine, one-zero-zero-seven.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Okay, we'll see, clerk, please sound the next item.
Approval of an alcohol beverage license application for Casa de Tontos LLC DBA Sip Wine Toppers Restaurant, located at one-two-six-three-five Crab Apple Road, Suite one-ten, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is John Foster Smith for consumption on the premises wine and malt beverage distilled spirits. Agenda item zero-nine, one-zero-zero-eight. Stacey Ingles?
Um, I'm actually going to defer to...
She's gonna defer back to me, and I will tell you, mayor and council, that we have reviewed this application, um, from an administrative perspective, and they have met all of the requirements that we have with respect to, um, the administrative part of the ordinance. I am going to ask the city attorney to weigh in on the fact that there have been some questions with respect to the distance requirements and the interpretation of the ordinance. Um, and I'd like Ken to take a second to, and answer those questions or take any questions from you with respect to that, but no, they've met all the administrative requirements of the premise.
Mr. Mayor and, and the council, let me just, let you know where we are by where we've been, and where we've been is, is that we have looked at the survey provided with respect to this license for a while and have thought about it. Um, the initial survey obviously showed the distance meet our code, um, and we then let staff take a look at it, and they came up with additional methodology, which I, uh, concurred with, that did not show that they met the requirements of the code. However, uh, as we try to do, we work with people and have considered their arguments as to why the original methodology was in fact compliant with the code. I have looked at that, I have then extrapolated that based upon the language in our ordinance, and it has to do with whether or not, uh, the city should allow folks in doing the measurements to cross over unpaved right-of-way to meet the nearest location of the property. And, uh, based upon looking at that, um, I believe their argument is a valid one, that we should not allow that, and since we don't allow it, and if we conclude we don't allow it, then in fact the nearest distance is the one their surveyor originally came up with, which would then therefore mean they are compliant. So my recommendation to you would be, uh, is let's go ahead and approve this application based upon the fact that their methodology they employ is arguably consistent with our code, and then let's modify the alcohol code to shore that up such that you can, that, that you have to use, uh, crossing over even unpaved right-of-way as a basis to do your calculation. It will take all uncertainty out of this issue, and quite frankly, it is an area that a lot of codes don't address, and we would be setting some precedent here, and that would be a good thing, by closing this what I would consider to be a loophole. So, go ahead and modify the code, but on this one, I believe their arguments have merit. Let's go ahead and do it. That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Yeah, well, then I'm gonna go ahead. Well, if you got any, do you have any questions here? Ken?
Distance from a school or distance from another supplier of alcohol beverages?
Well, the, the requirement is, is to the, to the nearest grounds of a school. And so what happened is, is that when we were doing our methodology, we were going along the right-of-way, going along, excuse me, the, the paved surfaces, and then to get to the nearest point of the ground, we were crossing unpaved right-of-way to get to the nearest point on the ground, and their surveyor took a conception of that and said, "Look, that's not the way you should be doing it. You should be using paved right-of-way, taking a more of a circular route and going in through their paved entrance." I understand their argument, it's got merit to it, my recommendation is, is to let this one go, and then we'll clarify that in the future, we can cross that right-of-way, go off the paved surface to get to the nearest point of the school grounds. That will do what I think is consistent with the spirit of the code, which is, is to lessen these distances, because we want a little more separation between a school and an alcohol vending institution.
And the school is the daycare center, the Goddard School?
It's the Goddard School, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for staff or, Karen?
While we're working on that, I would like us to clarify whether or not a daycare qualifies as a school.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I have some questions about, based on that code section of the Georgia Code, and I just think for the future, that needs a, the decision that we need to make as a council is whether or not the daycare qualifies as an accredited educational institution based on that section.
Right.
And I would like, while we're closing things up, let's make sure we all understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Truly?
Thank you, mayor. Um, in terms of providing additional language that would enhance this ordinance...
Yes.
Can we talk briefly about what the timetable of that would be and whether or not we have any other applications between now and when that can be accomplished?
With respect to the additional language, from, from the city attorney's perspective, that can be done very quickly. This is not gonna be a very lengthy modification at all. I'm talking about a couple of lines of text, and to Councilmember Thurman's point, clarifying what is and what is not gonna qualify as a school in the future, maybe a little more difficult, but not a whole lot. I could probably have you something, um, in January.
And Mr. City Manager?
I'm, I'm taking notes, uh...
Mr. City Clerk, I'm not sure.
If we, if, if we can get what we need out of Ken's office, we could be in first presentation on January sixth, which would throw it as an adoption of January eighteenth. I do not, I am not aware at this point, I haven't seen the agenda, I'm not aware if there's any pending applications, um, in the pile. I don't know the answer to that, but, uh, on a timing basis, January sixth and eighteenth would give us two options to get something adopted in the form of an ordinance.
But the council members on our behalf, I will say this, I understand your concern, I know exactly what you're getting at. I think this, this sip wines is gonna be the exception. I would be very surprised if we saw another one coming through like this one that had the kind of arguments they could make. Um, it's a loophole, and we're gonna close it.
I, I would like this to come for a work session, though, so that we can discuss this other aspect of it, rather than just going before the council. I think this is something very important, um, and I think it, I would like it to come at a work session.
I would have to agree with that too, just because we need to be thorough.
I, I think, to your point, Councilmember Thurman and Mr. Mayor, I think the issue of the school lends itself more than the issue of just the calculation of the distance, and I agree with that.
And, and perhaps, as we evaluate that, if there were to be another application, um, I would just ask that our staff look at that and with the guidance from council, if we thought that there was another application coming through that would benefit from having that text change occur, even if we needed to do that first, and then also at the work session, maybe discuss those other clarifications. Again, the point being, whatever we need to do to ensure that we don't have another uncertain situation.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and also, mayor, and as you're looking at that, I'm assuming that the distances will also be reviewed not just with schools, but also with churches, as I understand, but the state and the local jurisdiction laws that apply.
It, the, it, this would not just be a school modification, this would apply to every use.
Correct.
This is a calculation methodology.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more questions from staff? Okay, none, I'm gonna close this public hearing. Mayor?
I move to approve gen- agenda item number zero-nine, one-zero-zero-eight.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk and a second by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any council discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Okay. Move on to the zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the rules and sound the next item?
Mayor and council, the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month for mayor and city council considering zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits and associated concurrent variances, and additions of ordinance as resolutions and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of their time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. The opposition will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks provided time remains with the, with the allotted time. The city clerk staff will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable, applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during the meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Department of Community Development to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of the rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of the relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you've contributed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more to a council member and you've not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests you have someone else speak for your point of view. Mayor and council, the first item on tonight's zoning agenda is RZ zero-nine, zero-four, an ordinance to create, I'm sorry, that was deferred by motion.
Can we move on to the second?
Yes, um, we will move on to the second, as soon as I can find it. Um, the second is EM zero-nine, zero-four slash VC zero-nine, zero-four, northeast corner of Highway Nine in Bethany Bend by Dr. David Smith. A request to revise condition two-A from the site plan received by the Department of Environment and Community Development on November eighth, two thousand and six, to the site plan received by the City of Milton Community Development Department on November the third, two thousand and nine. The applicant is also requesting a concurrent variance to delete the ten-foot landscape strip along the newly formed north property line to allow the required parking aisle width. Article twelve, G four, eight-two, agenda item number zero-nine, nine-nine-zero. First presentation was on December the seventh, two thousand and nine.
Mr. Tom Wilson?
Good evening, mayor and council. Since the time we accepted this application and advertised for this public hearing, I received the following letter from, uh, David and Melissa Smith. The letter is, uh, to the mayor and city council, and it reads, "Bethany Dan Urgent Care no longer wants to pursue this property and does not need the zoning modification as stated previously. Please excuse and delete this request previously submitted. Based on this letter and that, and that the need is no longer there for the modification, I recommend withdrawal of this application due tonight."
Do I have any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Counsel? Is the letter from the applicant but not the owner, is that correct?
It is from the applicant.
Okay, so it, would it be staff's impression that the same applicant will not be coming back before this body, based on your conversation?
That, that's certainly my impression.
I'd just like to ask two steps. Did they share any details, is, is this having any reflection on the City of Milton or just a, a change in their plans?
Just a change in their plans, I believe.
Okay, um, so we still have a public hearing, so, uh, there's no more questions of staff. Is there any comment, public comment on this?
Mayor, I do have a public comment card from Phil and Sharon Joseph. I don't know if we were able to answer their questions before, if they'd still like to speak.
They are actually in that room talking with Robin right now about, um, they are adjacent properties to it. Shall I go and get them?
Their item was, yeah, just ask them if they want to speak. Their item was, was relevant, but I believe it was something we could handle at a staff level, so we're trying to do that, um, with this item being request for withdrawal. Let me find, make sure they do or don't want to speak, and then that'll be the only one.
You begin, and we'll chime in.
We'll let you sing.
Excuse me for playing hooky. Uh, I was talking to some of your staff in the other room. We're the adjacent property owners to the land on the corner of Route Nine and Bethany. Uh, we have...
Excuse me, Mr. Joseph, would you mind just for the record stating your name, address, and address?
I'm sorry, uh, Phil Joseph, thirteen-eight-hundred Oakmead Trace in Milton, Georgia. Uh, what else?
That's it.
Okay. Um, and, uh, the reason I'm here is because, uh, the people who developed the property, when we moved in fifteen years ago, it was all completely undeveloped, of course, and when they developed it last time, they, you know, cut down the trees, put in a retaining wall, put a lot more dirt in, and then did the development, and we had an agreement with the developer to put a row of Leland Cypress in along that wall and the fence on our side of the property, and that has not been done. Um, they also agreed to, when they put the sidewalk in, it kind of disrupted the entrance to our subdivision, and we knew it was gonna do that, so they said they would fix that up when they got done. They haven't done that either. Um, those are two things they said they would do they have not done, and then, in addition to those two things, um, when it was under construction, a lot of rainwater brought mud down on our property, got into our kids' playset and sandbox and all that kind of stuff, and a big mess. Took a lot of pictures and showed the people who were working at the time, they said they could fix that up, but that hasn't been done. Um, and then now, when it rains hard, a lot of water comes through the wall on our property, um, which I'm sure was unanticipated, but that also is not satisfactory. So, uh, for all those things, we don't know what recourse we have as adjacent property owners. Um, we didn't have any particular objection to what their plan was with the, the property, um, but we'd like to have our land not be as impacted as it is, so, um, that's why we're here tonight. And apparently this thing's been withdrawn, um, and we were in the other room talking to the, uh, staff member about what the conditions were of, of the zoning or whatever, um, and so that's kind of where we are. You know, we're the adjacent property owners, we'd like to see these things resolved, and, um, I'm not sure the best way to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment, and I'd just like to ask, and again, in public comment, it's not a time for discussion back and forth, but I would like to ask our staff to, um, follow up on this and, uh, meet with the justices and, and also give us an update, if you could, either email or whatever, an update on that, but thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Bring it to our attention. Okay, will we have any other public comments?
Yeah, that's all the cards I have.
Okay, then, uh, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, do I have any, uh, council discussion? Or do I have a motion in the second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, withdraw, um, agenda item number zero-nine dash nine-nine-zero.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Tarr, second by, uh, Councilmember Hewitt. Do we have any, any other discussion? Hearing, no.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
An ordinance to amend the City of Milton Tree Preservation Ordinance and Administrative Guidelines, agenda item zero-nine-nine-nine-one, first presentation on December seventh. Mr. Drew Tom Wilson?
Mayor and council, this item is an addendum to the two thousand and six City of Milton Tree Preservation Ordinance and Administrative Guidelines to provide additional protection to city-owned trees, and in so doing, allow the City of Milton to be eligible for the designation as a Tree City USA. I want to give you just a little bit of background about the Tree City USA program, which is a very distinguished award. Uh, it is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the USDA Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters, which bestows communities with the Tree City USA designation upon meeting certain criteria. The Tree City USA program is designed to recognize those communities that effectively manage their public resources and to encourage community tree management. Tree City USA designation brings the city national recognition as a greener community and identifies the city as one that cares about its trees and the overall quality of life of its residents. The program also provides direction, technical assistance, grant award options, public awareness and education, and will provide further resources which can help to improve the city's systematic management of its tree resources. There are three thousand three hundred and ten communities in the United States that are currently a Tree City USA, and a hundred and twenty-five of those cities are in Georgia, including Alpharetta, Roswell, and Ken... The City of Milton has applied for the Tree City USA designation and must show that it meets all the criteria by December thirty-one, two thousand and nine. We are short only two items on meeting all of those criteria, and both of those items, uh, deal with the protection of city-owned trees and trees on city-owned property. By installing two additional parap... By installing two additional paragraphs in our existing tree preservation ordinance, we will meet the totality of all those requirements. Those two conditions are that all trees growing on public property, parks, grounds, and rights of ways are protected, and any person or entity causing their damage or removal is subject to penalties set forth in Section 9. And in Section 9, adding this statement, if a person damages, destroys, or fails to protect the tree, the city's trees, the city may require the person responsible for the damage to pay a fine equal to the appraised value of the tree, the cost of repairing the damage, and/or the cost of restoring the site to its original conditions or as near as possible to its original condition. By inserting those two paragraphs into our existing tree preservation ordinance, we will have met all of those requirements by the end of this year, and we can expect to receive that designation sometime early next year. Do not confuse this with the other tree protection ordinance that is processing through us right now, which is a major overhaul of the existing one, but this will get us through where we want to be for that designation of Tree City USA, and I recommend that we approve these two changes.
Okay, do we have any questions from Council, Mr. Wilson, Karen?
I just had one quick question. I think most residents don't realize that they really don't own the first 10 to 20 feet of their property that really is city-owned property, and how are we going to educate them that they can no longer cut down trees that may be on what they believe is their property but really belongs to the city and is in the right of way?
Well, I think we can use some of our outreach programs through either the website, our newsletter, and we can talk about it in public meetings, and hopefully we can stop that. There's not a lot of trees in the right of way. We try to keep the trees out of the right of way for safety purposes.
On some of the older roads, there are some trees in them.
You're absolutely right.
And I just want to make sure that we don't start ticketing people when they really don't realize that it isn't their priority.
It's part of our education program in the new ordinance, which is processing through right now. We will certainly add that in there and make sure that people understand that there's at least one and a half feet outside the pavement which does not belong to you but appears to belong to you, and which we would control that as well. The new ordinance, as you recall, will have a provision in there that removal of trees would require a tree removal permit, at which time we could certainly take a look at, or would take a look at where those trees are located.
Okay, Julie?
Yes, and just to lower what Councilmember Thurman was saying, and to your point, is that from a communication standpoint, also Milton grows green would be happy to obviously be a part of that communication as part of the official kind of education outreach programs, because that also is tied in very specifically to our pursuit of Milton becoming a green-designated city. So obviously, this parlay's into that and trying to pursue the ARC's designation as a green city, obviously over time, and we'll obviously have more conversation about that. But not only as a council member, but also as somebody active with Milton grows green, I of course support these two additions and appreciate staff making sure we get these done by the 31st.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Motion in the second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Milton Tree Preservation Ordinance and Administrative Guidelines pursuant to Mr. Wilson's comments, Agenda Item Number 09991.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, seconded by Councilmember Bailey. Do I have any council discussion? Hearing done?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will the City Clerk please stand on the next aisle?
In ordinance adopting and enacting a code of ordinances which codifies ordinances as they existed on June 15, 2009, Agenda Item 091000. Mayor and Council, this agenda item is a second presentation, one that we had a special talk meeting for last week right prior to the work session. This is a process that is guided and required by state law to, as Ken nicely dumbed it down to my level earlier, take all of our stuff and put it in a nice package so that our ordinances are codified and brought together in the correct format. One of the things that will happen with, as a result of this process, is our ordinances will be able to be searched on the Internet, the MuniCode, which is a definite plus, that people won't have to hunt and check at different places to find our code, they'll be able to get it in a central clearinghouse. And again, I don't really have to speak as to why this is required, this is state law, and this is, seek your approval tonight to actually codify our ordinances.
Ken, any questions for Chris on this?
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of timing, when that search mechanism will be in place, do we have any sense of that timing?
I understand it's quick. I'm iffy to sit here tonight and tell you, as I'm sure Jeanette would know better than I do, she can give you exactly the day. I want to say it's, with my disclaimer, I'll have to check whether, but it was as quick as almost 15 days after this particular action. It was one of those things that I want to say is already in process and already almost complete, it's just a matter of turning on. Again, let me, if I come back to you at the next bid and say, oh, I really screwed that up, then I'll do that.
But it's a shorter timeframe as opposed to longer.
Yes.
And does that search mechanism reside on our server?
It does, and we'll actually link to it, it'll be MuniCode, which is used by a lot of jurisdictions, but we'll link to it from our website.
Very similar to what we would have seen and have seen in other jurisdictions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in the second.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, Agenda Item Number 09-1000, approval of an ordinance adopting and enacting a code of ordinances which codifies ordinances as they existed on June 15, 2009.
Second motion. Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, seconded by Councilmember Laun. Any discussion? Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Moving on to new business, the City Clerk, please stand on the first item.
Approval of a resolution adopting the partial plan update of the City of Milton 2008-2028, comprehensive plan, Agenda Item 091009.
Mayor and Council, to begin the discussion tonight, I've asked Michelle McIntosh-Ross to put together a little background on this item, on how we got to where we are, and when this was developed, why it was developed, why it has never been before you, and the process from this point forward. So with that, in your commission, I'll ask Michelle to give us that background.
Good evening. Since Milton is incorporated as this city, the state, it's a state requisite for all local governments to complete a comprehensive plan per the State Georgia Community Development Affairs Guidelines for Comprehensive Planning. In 2007, Milton initiated the comprehensive planning process in accordance with these guidelines. The state requires three components for the comprehensive plan. The community assessment, which is an inventory of the city, the community participation, which describes the public involvement strategy for the planning process, and the community agenda.
Michelle?
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, we've got some members in our audience that are saying that they can't hear your commentary.
What about now?
And they very much want to hear your every word, so thank you.
Is that better?
Can the audience, can the audience hear any better now?
Get the mic out. Tell us how your mic's.
Get the mic out. Can the audience hear me any better than that?
It is on.
Just right in a little bit.
Okay. It's like singing, okay. All right, so I'll just start again. Since Milton is incorporated as a city, it is a state requisite for all local governments to complete a comprehensive plan per the State's Department of Community Affairs Guidelines for Comprehensive Planning. In 2007, Milton initiated the comprehensive planning process in accordance with these guidelines. The state requires three components for comprehensive planning. The community assessment, which is an inventory of the city, the community participation, which describes the public involvement strategy for the planning process, and the community agenda, which is the forward-thinking document which includes division for future development of the city. Now, there are two components that need to be adopted and approved by the state prior to the initiation of the community agenda. That's components one and two, the assessment and community participation. These components were completed and submitted to the state in the spring of 2008 and were approved by the state in May of 2008. In the midst of working on Section 3, which is the community agenda, it was realized that the deadline for submission of was earlier than it was anticipated. The, to address this issue, the DCA, which is the Committee, Department of Community Affairs. It starts to make me nervous. I'll just, is this dead? Can we hear now? This wood?
Why don't you just come sit here and check?
Okay.
I can read from the script, if you don't want me messing with my drawings.
Okay. Okay, so I'm at the section where the components that needed to be adopted in the community assessment and community participation was completed and submitted to the state in the spring of 2008, and it was approved by the state when they approved it. In the midst of working on the community agenda, it was realized that the deadline for submission was earlier than anticipated. To address this issue, the Department of Community Affairs offered a compromise that Milton could prepare and submit a partial plan update as an interim document and resume rules on the community agenda to be submitted before the 2011 deadline. In December of 2008, Milton completed and submitted the partial plan update as directed and was approved by the state in February of 2009. Per the regulations, the partial plan update must be subsequently adopted by the local government within 12 months of the state's approval, and that would be February of 2010. If the partial plan update is not adopted by the city before the deadline, the city risks losing its local qualified government status. As you remember, the council work session on November 9, the CPAC Chair George Raddeil discussed the status of the community agenda and the approaching deadline for adopting the partial updates and its consequences. It was decided that it was best interest for the city to move forward with the adoption of the partial update and allow CPAC to continue on track with the community agenda for completion in spring of 2010. I'll give you a little bit of information about the partial update. The partial update includes a combination of sections from the community assessment and also some sections from the community agenda. It is the intention that the partial plan update would provide local governments with a foundation for the completion of the community agenda. In the partial plan update, it includes sections such as quality community objectives, areas requiring special attention, issues and opportunities, and these sections are in line with the community assessment sections. Also in the partial update are the implementation program as well as the future land use map and future development map, which represents portions of the community agenda. All of these sections were completed and the partial plan update was determined to be complied with the state's regulations and approved by the state. The next step is for Milton to comply with the state regulations and officially adopt the partial plan update, date by February of 2010. With that recommendation, that the partial plan update will not be adopted by the City of Milton.
Okay, is there, I know Mr. Rexdell's here, and he can also, if there's maybe some questions, Council to staff, or chuckle him on, Mr. Rexdell, he has any comments on that? Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
Julie?
I had a question. I had provided, as Mr. Wilson had requested, had provided some input based on the documentation that was provided to us on a disk, and there seems to have been some confusion about certain sections, and I think what I just heard Michelle mention is that the partial update plan actually does include segments of the assessment and some different components.
Components, yeah, but the partial plan update was on a separate CD.
Yeah, that's not the CD that some of us have got. But anyway, the disk that I received, I provided input on that, and I just wondered, oh, there's Mr. Wilson. I forgot that you were in that chair instead. And I just wondered if you could speak to that. I know that tonight, obviously, the goal is to approve that document. Some of the sections obviously had some just inconsistencies with one section versus another, and could you speak to whether or not some of that will be adopted as a part of this this evening? As an example, it still speaks to a high school on Freemanville Road. We don't have a high school on Freemanville Road any longer, it's on Bethany and Cogburn. There was some information that came out of our ECOs consultant team that obviously had not yet been incorporated, and given this will replace our Focus Fulton document, it would seem that that needs to still make those references. So again, if you could just speak, Mr. Wilson, very briefly, to whether or not the document does in fact include some of those sections, and then just how we will incorporate some of those, I'll call them video synchrasies, just to make sure that we have some consistency before this goes back to the state.
Well, I can talk to you about part of that. Since you and I spoke this morning, I have been trying to discern why the document that you reviewed might be different than the one that I reviewed. I'm not sure. You had different page numbers, you had different chapters and sections that I did not have on my CD. So I think you might have possibly reviewed an earlier version that had more than just the partial plan update on it. Nevertheless, it is our intention to give great consideration to all of the points that you raised and incorporate those into the final document, which would be the community assessment that is due back to you sometime early spring. And so, we won't miss any of that, although I can't say that I can incorporate all into the document before you tonight.
So I guess the question, and again, I just reviewed the disk that was provided to me, so what?
Sorry, I don't know how that happened. I think we may have actually given you one and then gave you another one sometime later.
I don't know, or maybe I just was given the one. Nonetheless, the, whether those pages are different or not, the commentary, I think, is still relevant, which is the point. Will we be, before this is submitted to the state, will those inconsistencies be corrected before it's submitted to the state? I mean, I know that you had also mentioned last week.
No, this has already been submitted to the state.
So it's not going to be modified? So it's really just approving what was already before the state?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's, within this plan, there's not, even, I know that you had mentioned last week, that even in the document itself, just, it has some errors, just that any time we produce a document, we would want that to be obviously as correct as it can be. So in this interim document, we won't be correcting any of those as well?
The interim document is exactly the one that was presented to the DCA. I do want to take some time, obviously, to correct any errors that are in there or any inconsistencies in there. I need more time to do that, and along with the CPAC, we will give very careful consideration to all of those points that you brought out and try to resolve those inconsistencies in there. That would come back to you in the form of the final community assessment, which we hope to get out to you sometime in March or April, something like that.
Okay, and also, if you could just speak to the, my understanding with the partial plan is that any of the maps that are attached, that those maps are consistent with Focus Fulton 2025, that none of those maps would allow or would contemplate a change in any of the underlying zoning, whether that be the current or future? Can you just speak to that as well?
That is certainly my understanding, but I'd like to see that Michelle concurs with that.
Yes, all of the maps, future land use maps from Focus Fulton is included into the partial update.
So none of those bigger changes are in this document or the maps associated with this document?
So even though there could be some inconsistencies, or there could be reference to something that's maybe inconsistent with what ECOs has now reported to us, there's no risk with those inconsistencies if we tonight adopt that partial update plan?
Well, we will still have the maps from the Fulton 2025 to back us up on that.
And I guess my only question would be, since I read in this doc, and again, I'm, you know, was more than prepared, which is why, well over a week ago, I submitted those comments after I was provided a disk, just looking at the dates of February 10th being that deadline, is there any reason from staff's perspective that you think it would make sense, just to make sure that there's nothing that is going to be an aha or a loophole, such as we saw earlier this evening, when we then have somebody come forward and we say, oh, you know, we should have caught that?
I think there certainly is time for you to review this at a later date and still meet the deadline. We could do this in the January meeting and provide additional time to try to reconcile some of that.
And again, I have reviewed it and provided, you know, my output, so.
Appreciate that.
I think it's more a function of whether or not staff or anybody else that helped with that document would need to review it, just to ensure that there's not anything that would cause any confusion later. So I'll leave that in your able hands to give some input on.
I would be more than happy to do that.
Karen?
I just have one other quick question. The ARC made some recommendations for changes. The ARC made some recommendations for changes to it, will those just be made as part of the final?
Correct.
Plan? We didn't make those to the partial plan, which-
The partial plan, and we talked with the ARC as well, and we still, in fact, are willing to incorporate those in the agenda.
Because they had some issues with things conflicting and overlapping and repetitiveness, it sounds like, that we're going to take care of in the final plan.
The final plan.
Thank you.
Okay, time for more questions, Chair.
Just because of the importance of this document, I guess my question would be, let's say a rezoning comes before us after this plan is adopted, how potentially, just trying to hypothetically think about, if there was an inconsistency in the partial plan update, how would that impact or not impact an item that might be before us, since it would now refer to this document as opposed to the Focus Fulton 2025 plan?
There hasn't been any changes with the zoning map, so any of the zoning-
Okay, so even if some of the-
The zoning maps are all still secure.
Right.
But if there were inconsistencies, it could have an influence on the zoning map that came before you.
So the text itself could effectively-
It's possible.
Could override a map, and could the city attorney just speak to that?
Well, the word effect is broad. Yes, it could affect your determination, it could affect, in fact, it'd affect staff's recommendation too. But again, that goes back to the issue of ultimate zoning laws and appropriate city council map, and even the text or simply recommendations, you have the ability to do what you see fit, but on your vision of the city. Hopefully, that city is embodied, provided, and comprehensive plan, that's the idea behind it in some respects, but while it may affect, I don't think you have the control.
And I'll just bring up two sections as an example, Mayor, if you will, I just want to ask, as an example, there was some reference, and maybe this was part of the confusion in the disk that was provided versus that, which maybe others were looking at, but in the disk that I was provided, it did make reference to a section that was specific to crabapple, as just one example, and there was a table within, I know George is shaking your head, but that was the document that I was given. And so my question for staff is just, within this partial plan update, is the table that references those densities, is that part of this document?
It's not.
It is not, okay, so the table that's, that we need to review and make sure that that's accurate, we need some audit of that table, is that part of this plan, as your understanding?
That table is not in the document.
And I don't know how you got that table on your desk.
Okay, so you can confirm that that table is not part of the document that we're, is before us this evening?
That's not part of the document that you were, that we're asking you to approve tonight.
And do you, Michelle, do you actually have a hard copy of the document?
It's from you.
That'd be-
I did it.
That would be helpful. And then the other question, as it relates to Arnold Mill, you know, because in Focus Fulton 2025, Arnold Mill is referred to as a neighborhood activity node, and in the documentation that I received and reviewed, it didn't necessarily reference the neighborhood activity node, and I realize that going forward, that mayor may not, you know, be modified, but I don't think that any of us tonight were prepared to see that node automatically broadened, because that hasn't yet been a discussion point, and in fact, I think we heard a lot from the public that they were concerned about how Arnold Mill might evolve. So again, specifically with regards to that reference, I mean, I can give you the section, at least it was on the disk I was provided, how do we reconcile that, since that's an area where we could conceivably have a rezoning come forward?
I'm going to ask the chairman of the comprehensive plan advisory committee to address that. I think we were able to, despite the differences in the page number, I think we were still able to find those sections in the document that you spoke to, and so if Mr. Ragsdale would sort of address that issue, I would really appreciate it.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
First, the, Julie, I don't know how you got the disk that you got, but in thinking about it after the fact, what you were looking at was the assessment and not the partial plan. I don't know how you got that. The assessment is not part of the partial plan, it's a separate document. The assessment is something we will revisit and update and submit again as part of the agenda, as Michelle said, but it does not get submitted as part of the partial plan. The Arnold Mill question is not, is not referenced in the partial plan documents, it's referenced in the document that you looked at, but it's not specifically referenced in the partial plan. As a practical matter, if we were going to deal with Arnold Mill today, based on the few notes that we've had and the recommendations of CPAC at this point, our recommendation with respect to Arnold Mills, it needs to have separate master planning effort done for it, so that isn't in the partial update, it was something that we talked about after the fact. Part of what we're dealing with here is a time war. You know, in your comments, you made reference to some of the things that Ecos said. Ecos wasn't even involved at the time the partial plan was written and or submitted. We're always going to have that question of, you know, does the partial plan or the agenda reflect at that precise moment everything that we know, and it's never really going to be there. So the fact that we're, you know, a year basically removed from when the partial plan was submitted, to me, is not appropriate to go back and rewrite the whole thing, it was appropriated at the point in time, and we are trying to get to the point where we can accomplish all of the changes that you want as part of the agenda. The only thing that's going forward now for adoption is the partial plan. The assessment will be rewritten, rewritten as part of the agenda and be submitted with the agenda. The agenda will be rewritten, and you guys all have a chance to comment on both of those before they go to the state.
And just to clarify, because, Michelle, I thought I had heard when you gave your summary initially this evening, that you mentioned that the partial plan had segments or components of, I don't want to misquote you-
Okay.
Because I was listening very intently.
Mm-hmm. What I meant is, when DCA came up with the partial update requirement-
Yes, ma'am.
They wanted pieces from what you would be planning to do for the agenda, as well as pieces that you had done on the assessment-
Correct.
To put that together, to make a bridge document.
But not the specific sections per se, again, give the disk that I was given, you know, I just, I just did what I was asked to do.
I don't know whether you ever got a copy of my letter, I am always very conscious of not speaking for the committee without getting the committee's blessing. I responded to all of the questions you had raised, which, just for clarity, I got on Monday last week, and I responded to all of those, I think all the points you made with respect to the partial update, most of those were not written the way you were concerned about. So in the partial update, I think most of them were already dealt with. You know, the point about crabapple, for example, there is no separate section on crabapple, that's six pages you've referenced in the assessment, there is no chart of the 200,000 square feet in the partial update, so a lot of the things that you, that you were concerned about just weren't there. Those that were, I believe, are things that we will deal with and will correct, but I don't think that they establish any precedent or any problem for the city going forward until that plan's approved. Remember that there is no zoning map as part of the agenda or the partial update, the zoning map is not being changed by the plan.
And I do understand that, and I appreciate that, and again, just, I think going forward, we just need to be very certain, and when discs are provided, we're all very certain in terms of, is it a prior or is it a current, but nonetheless, in terms of the, in terms of the sections-
Once the partial update's approved, you guys should throw away every disk you have.
Right. Well, I mean, that was a disk that was delivered to my homes, and again, I reviewed what was provided to me, and I reviewed it as soon as I got it, and then I provided my commentary to staff. With regards, though, to Arnold Mill, and so because of that timing differential, and again, this goes back to Mr. Gerard probably in time, if, because there's not a, any reference to the Ecos documentation, and knowing that Focus Fulton 2025 had always referred to that Arnold Mill area as a neighborhood node, because that has not yet had a separate master plan, is it fair to say then that any rezoning that would come before us would still bear out based on what we know to be the current zoning, the distinction between AG1 and the area that had been identified historically for potential commercial within that neighborhood node further north on Arnold Mill?
The future land use map has not changed.
Okay.
And it would not change with the adoption of this document.
And I will just say that since we have until February, you know, ideally, especially because we're dealing with land use issues, having as much of that be current would seem to be in the best interest of all areas of Milton. Do you, Mr. George, feel that we have any potential risk that this, because of the differential in timing and the fact that what we're hearing is that nothing has been changed since it was submitted to DCA, even though there are some inconsistencies based on what we know today? I mean, if we're going, I'm just concerned that we're going to adopt a document, knowing that there's some inconsistencies, and knowing that it doesn't incorporate some of the input from consultants that we hired to provide us input through this process.
Yeah, well, the risk is only that you will receive data as part of your decision-making process that you don't agree with or don't think reflects the guidance you got from some of the consultants, but with respect to what the city ultimately wants to do and this council wants to do, you have the ability to vote for land use in a manner that's consistent with your vision for those areas irrespective of those discrepancies, and that's my counsel too, and that's, that's, that's the way the law works. This document does not bind your hands, it does not tell you how you have to vote, it simply is a tool. And so I would say, if the council was on a really, to the extent there's a risk, I would characterize the risk as-
The risk is probably more to staff recommendations, or I think it is to your decisions as well.
And yet, that's obviously a critical component of the analysis process. So let's, could you then address that? Is that based on the current partial plan that's before us this evening, is there a risk that based on the text that's before us, that that would indeed modify or change how staff would approach or analyze a particular rezoning?
I mean, you'd have to review it on a case-by-case basis, to say that it's impossible would not be accurate, and it is possible that it could have an influence on that, but again, we'd have to view it on a case-by-case basis, and if anything like that were to come up, we would give you the information based on both the partial plan update and the previous version of that.
I mean, that's, that's-
If we detected an inconsistency, I would certainly make that known to you.
I mean, that's the way you, that's the way, to the extent that you're concerned about harm or risk, that's the way you ameliorate that, is that you make sure that staff calls out those issues so that they are part of the, of the report, because, yeah, the staff is going to work based upon the things that you all have adopted, but if you tell staff, look, if there is a concern that there's inconsistencies or information or data has not been provided, please call that out to us, so that that's important, we can factor that in in our decision-making process, and I believe, I think staff will do that, particularly if that's the direction the council is going to take.
I just got one quick question. What alternative do we really have here? Because we don't have time to make changes, get it back to our ARC to approve before the February 12th deadlines, we really don't have any choice but to adopt this document that they have already approved at this point in time, do we?
Well, we could modify, we could just modify the inconsistencies with-
But they have, then they would have to approve those.
No.
Wouldn't they?
Well, I don't think so. I think if we were correcting inconsistencies, we had that in our review to do that and then adopt the document.
And that's all I was suggesting, is that because we have until February, if indeed there were inconsistencies, which I had seen, and I think that's, I mean, we've all agreed that there's some inconsistencies because of the timing differential, and to Councilmember Thurman's point, you know, there's not an alternative of substantively changing it, and that was never the suggestion, it was simply to say that if we're going to adopt a legally binding document, and we have until February, staff's aware, as a CPAC, that there were some inconsistencies, that you could bring it current without a whole lot of effort, I'm just not sure why we wouldn't do that, to make sure that we mitigate any risk and still meet, of course, that February deadline, which is important.
It is not a legally binding document.
I'm sorry, sir.
It is not a legally binding document.
Different perspectives on-
Well, I think the distinction being made here is that it is a legal enactment by the city, but to Mr. Ragsdale's point, and I think I mentioned this as well, it is not controlling on your decisions.
I understand the difference.
Bill, any questions?
A quick one here, may have been picked up before, and it may be a typo, but the letter from ARC dated February 12th to the city, and in the second paragraph, it says, "In order to meet the local planning requirements, the county must adopt the plan and forward the adoption resolution to ARC." Is that a typo, or is the county involved?
I don't know the title of that letter, I just-
Yeah, I saw that, I figured it was just meant city. Yeah, they just, they just used their form letter and forgot to change it from county to city.
It seems to be that.
Chip, anyone else have a question? Do I have a question on this?
Mr. Mayor? Move to approve a resolution adopting the partial plan update to the City of Milton 2008 to 2028 Comprehensive Plan, Agenda Item Number 09-1009.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, and a second, or have any comments? I'd like to stand one, let's deal with this discussion and have a bunch of points and staff, and we will make sure that as we move forward, that we do look at everything and that we can make the right decisions if we want to, except that there are some inconsistencies, that staff will make sure that we know that, and make the decisions that we, that we take are right.
And Mayor, if I may, and I just, I want to clarify now, the motion has been made that the document before us this evening does not include a table that references specific, specific information of crabapple, that the land use map, the future land use map are consistent with the Focus Fulton 2025, and that that has not changed at all, and that the intent is simply to bridge the difference in timing, but it's been acknowledged here this evening publicly that there were some timing differences, and because of that timing difference, there's information from Ecos, there's information that's been identified by council and by staff that is indeed inconsistent, and that those inconsistencies should not be construed as support of those inconsistencies that we're anticipating, as the mayor stated, that those would be corrected.
Any other comments? Very none. Who's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, well, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Approval of a resolution to adopt the 2010 zoning and use permit zoning modification for the zoning appeals in the City of Milton Design Review Board schedules.
Item 09-1010.
Uh, Mayor, Council, we've prepared those, that schedule for you. Robin McDonald has one change that she would like to speak to you about.
Okay. Good evening, there's one change on the rezoning and use permit schedule, after I have the Planning Commission review it, they have recommended that under a Planning Commission meeting 12/22/10 be changed 12/15/10, so whoever makes the motion, if you can make that, if you agree from that, a change to the table, and other than that, everything is ready to go for our next year's schedules for our Planning Commission, Design Review Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as the Planning Commission.
Okay, any questions for Mr. McDonald on this?
Just a clarification, you said change it from 12/22/10 to 12/15/10?
Correct.
And that was the Planning Commission?
Yes. The fourth one.
Okay, do I have a motion, a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 09-1010, approval of a resolution to adopt the 2010 zoning and use permit zoning modification, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the City of Milton Design Review Board's schedules, with the one change for the Planning Commission meeting from 12/22/10 to 12/15/10.
Second. The motion of Councilmember Thurman, seconded by Councilmember Tarr. Any discussion? Hearing none? Who's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. City clerk, please sound your-
Approval of a resolution to adopt the City of Milton Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Item 09-1011.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and that is really a culmination of a year-long effort of development of our transportation plan. I'd like to thank everyone who had an opportunity and participated in the development of the plan, it was quite a long list, but in particular, the members of the TSAC committee who volunteered their time to make a concerted effort in the development of this plan, our consultant, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, who kind of shepherded us through this.
Tonight, we have Faye Massimo and James Fowler here from Kim Lee Horn, Christina Pastor and Ed Ellis also played an integral part in the development of the plan, and of course, Sarah Leers, who kept me on task through this whole thing and put up with me through the project. We reviewed this plan, the draft presentation of the plan was made back on November 9th, and the final presentation was last Monday. This plan has incorporated any comments that were received through that process, and I believe is ready for adoption tonight. Once adopted, this plan will really set really our short-term and long-term work programs for, as far as transportation is concerned, and we look forward to implementing the recommendations of the plan and making it really a useful document for the public and staff. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if Faye is here, also, she can answer any questions, if we have anything on the document tonight.
Okay, do you have questions for Mr. Wilson?
Okay, do you have questions for Mr. Lucas or staff? Okay, do I have a motion or second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to adopt the City of Milton Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Agenda Item Number 09-1011. And in so doing, I'd also like to echo the thanks to all of those who have been very involved, including our consultants and staff, and volunteers.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Bailey, seconded by Councilmember Diaversa. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Polls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Faye, Sarah, Tark, all staff, and the speciality of all citizens of T S A. Okay, well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mayor, this is approval of a resolution to authorize the City of Milton Mustang logo by athletic teams playing at Bell Memorial Park pursuant to agreements with the City of Milton, Agenda Item 09-1012. Mayor and council, this resolution was presented to you in your package and has been available for the public. The city attorney and I, on Friday, were put on notice of something that we need to do a little bit more evaluation into, I guess, before we can both sit here and recommend approval of this resolution. I don't know that we'll need a terribly long time to do evaluation, but being that we received this information Friday afternoon, that legal analysis that gives the city attorney, I don't know if the words in his mouth, he can speak for himself, comfort to say, we can authorize approval of this resolution. I don't know that quite there yet. I would propose, at this point, that you defer this item. I wanted to leave it on the agenda because I wanted to explain to you what the late breakthrough information was. I would like to at least defer it for one meeting, at the very least, so that Ken and I could hear a little bit more about it. It holds a placeholder on the meeting, so as soon as we get the legal evaluation done, we will bring it forward for the council action. Do you have any questions? Ken, he's sitting right here, he'll be answering.
Yeah, is there any questions?
So, you, you think you can have the analysis done by January 6th meeting?
Yes, I think I could probably have the analysis done next week. Again, this would be an analysis-
I don't want to meet next week.
I'm not terribly concerned, but on the other hand, I don't want to say that I'm not terribly concerned, to be on the wrong end of the lawsuit, unless we do well better.
Okay, do you have any questions? If not, do I have a motion to possibly defer this item?
For to January 6th.
To January 6th. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to defer Agenda Item 09-102, I mess it all up. I defer Agenda Item Number 09-1012 to the January 6th, 2010 regular meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, seconded by Councilmember Furze, to defer this item until the January 6th council meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we oppose? That's unanimous.
That's unanimous.
Okay, well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
This item is approval of a resolution stating the City of Milton's opposition to the use of Fulton County general fund money on special service district operations and services such as transferring the net revenue generated from traffic citations issued by the Fulton County Police Department within the geographical boundaries of the South Fulton Special Services District to the South Fulton Special Services District Fund. Agenda Item 09-1013. I will start by saying that this is presented by me to the extent that this was a resolution that came out of North Fulton Mayor's Municipal Association. I believe this was a resolution that was authored and brought forward by Mayor Wood of the City of Roswell. In fact, he's asked the councils of the five, or six, I guess, six respective North Fulton cities to evaluate this resolution. Other cities have passed a similar one, and it is here tonight for your consideration. Maybe the mayor can summarize briefly what it's about, I wasn't at the, that meeting.
And I do believe, I believe all the other cities have passed a resolution. Local Mayor's Association would like to send that message that, basically, that money that's collected in the, in the county is not just spent in one small particular area of the county.
That is the presentation that Ken reviewed. That was still to-
And let me say, let me add to, this is not, even if we pass this resolution, which I recommend that we do, this is only, this is just making a statement to, you know, to the county. So it's not anything to have to worry about.
Well, and, and to further that point, though, it also would direct your designated in the S, the service delivery strategy, mediations, to take a particular position with respect to that issue in the S D F, which is fine. It's a Milton, it's a favorable Milton position, which is should be that we should not allow a S D F negotiation or an I G A to occur where this money continues to be spent exclusively in the South Fulton area. Which is fine, that's consistent with the position your city manager's been taking already, but it would direct us to do that as a matter of a resolution.
Any questions?
Mayor, just quickly, is this going to be submitted to Fulton County along with the other jurisdictions, or each individually?
The other time you said not to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions? Do I have a motion or second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 09-1013.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Ross, seconded by Councilmember Tark for approval of this item. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we oppose? That's unanimous. City manager, please.
I'm going to help me out here. We have five contracts that were added by motion and vote, Mayor and council, and we'll take these kind of in order, but before we actually sound the items, I'm just going to go back on to why we're bringing this together in the form of a package. As, as you're aware, there will be the transition effective December the 31st, 2009, from the City of Milton, or from C H Toom Hill to the City of Milton. Along with that, there are certain subcontracts that were in place, and certain subcontracts that we believe need to remain in order to effect a smooth and harmonious transition from C H Toom Hill to the city. In consultation with our city attorney, what we agreed was the potentially best, best process by, by which to do this and the most streamlined, was to, for a period of up to six months, adopt some contracts, more or less transition contracts, where we at least recognize that the services provided on December the 31st is continued to be provided on January the 31st, without there being any lapse of being in service provided to the City of Milton. After further evaluation and research, we come to the fact that this, that these services reside within five different contracts. The first one that we'll get to here in a second deals with computer software that more or less runs the finance and community development departments of the city, and then some, some, some subcontracts, and when the items are followed, it will be a process as to what, in fact, that particular contract will provide. During the six months, these transition contracts are in place, the city will evaluate whether or not it intends to competitively bid certain contracts, whether or not it evaluates a different software program, or whether or not it lowers potential services delivered through governmental agreements with other, with other governments. Based on the speed of our transition, I believe these are necessary to keep us moving in a forward, forward pattern. And I've given you a lot of data today, and I can tell you, as recent as this morning, the final contract, we came to agreement between our attorney's office and the, and contractor. All five of these agreements have been through legal review and have been approved. And if you have any questions as to how legally we think we can do this, Ken is certainly here to answer those. Because of the, of the speed and urgency, and really the institutional knowledge of Milton, we are treating these as transition slash sole source type contracts. The costs and the scope of work that were delivered by C H Toom Hill and subcontractors remains the same. With that general overview, can I go ahead and sound the first item that we talked about?
Sure, and I just want to also confirm that, you know, what Chris just said is that, you know, all these, I don't know, legal review, and Chris has worked with these vendors, but we're also, it's not only a budgeted item, but they're also, you know, at or below what the cost that we have to pay, so.
The first one, which was added by motion and vote, is approval of a supplement to the Sun Guard Public Sector Incorporated Application Service Provider Agreement. That should be the first one in front of the first, I don't know what color to call that, your package, it's called salmon.
Salmon.
In front of the first salmon sheet. It deals with the software program that runs the finance department, as well as the community development department of the city. This is, is a contract that's the same price as was being charged by C H Toom Hill. It really allows us, a smooth transition allows us to continue with things tomorrow as they are today with respect to software and the data migration that we have. We don't have the issue of trying to migrate data into a new computer program. This seems to make sense, don't know that it makes sense long-term to remain with this particular company. I think there are other solutions out there that are potentially more cost-effective, but we will explore those over, over the next, next little bit. The Sun Guard contract is at a, is a rate of $12,935 per month. Any questions about that contract? I know, I could just tell you from a contractual perspective, it has met the, the legal review that's required of the contract. And in essence, I would just demonstrate what this particularly does, keeps the software system in place.
And also, correct, rip, or wrong, but if we were to not continue this contract, would it be a piece of financial obligation?
On this particular one?
On this one contract?
Yes, yes, Mayor, on, on this one. If we weren't to continue, we potentially would have some financial responsibility, even if we elected to go a different route.
Okay, do you have any questions, Bill?
This contract in particular, and all of the other contracts, is this the exact same scope of work that each one of them was providing through C H Toom Hill?
Yes. Same scope of work, same price.
Same price that C H was paying.
That's correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. The other questions, I have a motion or second?
Is this just on the Sun Guard?
This is just on Sun Guard.
Mayor, if I can just clarify, and I believe that we talked about this the last time we were together, when we were notified that this was coming forward. So when you mentioned, Chris, that it's the fee to which C H paid, minus the margin that has been allocated, that we ultimately didn't pay, correct? So it's there, it was their cost?
This was the, as I understand that these, this one's different, the Sun Guard. When we talk about subcontractors, we'll talk about that one a little bit different in a minute. Sun Guard, just like any maintenance software program-
It was the same with the-
Same price. I have no earthly idea what portion of a contract this $12,900 a month cost us.
This is the actual cost of-
This is the actual cost.
And is there anything within this contract that would allow that to be reduced at all in any way over the next six months, or only by replacement of this contract with another?
I believe replacement by, with this contract right now. We're, you know, when you, when you deal with Sun Guard, it's like trying to get A T and D to modify that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Or not, I have a motion or second?
Mayor, I'm going to approve service provider agreement for Sun Guard Public Sector, which is proposed by staff.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, seconded by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we oppose? That's unanimous. We can move on. Mr. City Clerk, election manager, for the next item.
I have a motion and vote, approval of a transition agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and Optech Manette LLC. Mayor and council, this is a subcontract that will deal with right-of-way maintenance, tree removal, potholes, litter pickup, ice removal, dead animals, drainage maintenance, mowing starting April, the park maintenance, crash pickup facilities maintenance, and the mowing in the parks as well. This is a subcontractor that, subcontractor with C H Toom Hill, again, same scope of work, and the same price per month that was paid by C H Toom Hill. This is a contract of a flat fee amount of $52,401.50 per month for the services and the scope of work. If you need any further elaboration on the scope of work, Kurt can probably help me out with some of that, because he's dealt with this on a day-to-day basis. Those were the bullet points he provided to me. Do you have any questions?
I just want to flip on this, is this added or below on projected budget?
It is within budget, yes.
Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Gerard, with regard to having multiple quotes in order to adopt a contractor or service provider for the city to outlay monies, city monies, does this part that's in here about our releasing to G purchasing policies, is that what covers the fact that we're not getting multiple quotes on these, we're adopting contracts that yet, these are sole source, these are not sole source providers? They're obviously, there's obviously competition.
That they are, yeah, you're exactly right. There is, in a perfect world, competition, but, but there is not competition that can pick up and do this work, starting January 1st, in a manner that will serve the citizens of Milton. That's why these are only for six months, because it's expected during that six months, there will be bids or R and P that is appropriate to go into a longer duration. That's the only reason they're sole source.
Any other questions? Bill?
Section two calls out project description that relates to road repairs, fixing potholes, the amount to one penny less than $20,000. Is that part of the $52,401? Or is that included in that?
The answer to your question is yes, and the reason that's called out specifically is because there is a specific statute in the state law that says that you cannot do more than $20,000 worth of roadway repairs without, and it doesn't, is, according to Mr. Higby, gives you zero exception by doing anything but going to a competitive bid, whether you're sole source or not. That's why this specifically called out one penny less than what the statutory requirement is for roadway repairs. We don't want to put ourselves in violation of the state law, neither we want the subcontractor to be in violation of the state law. That's why that is specifically seen.
Well, it takes us a penny.
Oh, it takes us a penny. George Law does not do a good job dealing with transitions like what we're going through right now, and doesn't really appreciate how difficult it is to do that, and so we had to come up with some, some, some.
So where is Exhibit A next here? Exhibit B?
It's on page 15.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it fair to say that our direct contact will be through our public works directed through Lucas in terms of managing these items and their scope of work? Second question would be, while this mentions a six-month clause, and I realize that R and P's take a time period, would there be any opportunity, is their language included that would allow for an early termination, should we find that there was indeed someone who could provide these services at a significantly lesser cost, or at least significant enough?
I believe, I believe there is a provision in all of them that allows for a 30-day termination without cost, so long as we pay up on whatever, I would announce it.
So you wouldn't have to complete that six month?
Not necessarily, no. Section 10.
Yes, just since some of these, obviously, are quite sizable.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion or second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve contract, which is my period of time with Optech.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll agree, since it's not listed out here specifically.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, and a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, seconded by Councilmember Thurman, to approve a transition agreement by, between the City of Milton, Georgia and Optech Manette LLC. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we oppose? That's unanimous. We can move on to the next item.
Approval of the transition agreement by, between the City of Milton, Georgia and Safelt, Georgia Incorporated for building and department services. Mayor and council, this is a contract that you're probably familiar with, that's been in place for some time, where we have Melissa Henderson, for example, if I can place you with the face to kind of get you in the mindset of what this particular position does, plan review, as well as building inspections. We have been on for the longest time since the beginning of this- We have been on for the longest time since the unit's contract in eighty-ten-ten split, where based on revenues received, Safe Built receives eighty percent, and then we have shared with CH Two of Hill ten percent of the revenues that are received. What we propose to do for the six months where we, by this one, is just to move that to an eighty-twenty split, and that's what this contract references. So Safe Built will continue to work for eighty percent, and the city will receive ten percent of the, I'm sorry, twenty, now, not twenty percent of the revenues. It'll just be a two weeks. Again, similar format, six months with a 30-day, 30-day out clause should it be needed. We've got good staff in this position. This is just a continuation of what exists.
Okay. Any questions for the sitting members? All right, I have a motion in a second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a transition agreement between Safe Built and the City of Milton, Georgia.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lawson, for approval of this contract with Safe Built. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
I just want to add by motion to vote approval of a transition agreement by between the City of Milton, Georgia and the Georgia Management Agency, the corporate and individual businesses, Roadworks. Roadworks, Mayor, council, is a company that provides us services with respect to our traffic control signal, sign repair, installation of new signs, sign and signal maintenance, also emergency repair in the event of a traffic light bulb just heard that out or any of those things that would affect the flow of traffic. Roadworks is the company that has been providing these. The service within the City of Milton, the scope of work is the same as what existed with CH Two of Hill. This, again, is a six-month contract with a 30-day opportunity at any point for convenience with a cancellation clause, and this is at a price of $6,900 per month, which is what this particular service would receive from CH Two of Hill for this contract.
Any questions? Bill?
So, is this a lump-sum contract? I noticed the unit price is.
This contract contemplates two different things. It contemplates a monthly fee that really accounts for two days' worth of services provided in the City of Milton. That means crews are in Milton, those are the days they are replacing the signs, handling some tripping stuff, I guess, whatever they do in those two days. You better elaborate on the two-day.
That's really a sign of work during those two days.
The place that it contemplates unit costs are when we end up with the emergency call. So it is a fixed fee, a fee, fixed fee, a flat amount per month for certain services, and then we deal with the emergency call-out, which honestly, we haven't used a lot of those over the course of Milton using this contract. And what we do try to do in certain circumstances, if it rises to the level of a call-out but it's not truly an emergency, we'll save until we have two or three call-outs together so that we get the whole benefit of, I mean, if we're going to call them out, we might as we get more than one thing done, which is a better use of them.
Okay, Bill?
Mayor, thank you. Chris, as we go forward on this, is it being contemplated that this, as well as some of the others, but this in particular, that seems to have some consistency with what we might anticipate a public works department would be engaged with, depending on the staffing and the assessment, obviously professionally of Mr. Lucas, especially when I think about signs and some things that if we've got resources available rather than to incur some significant dollars, are we contemplating that we would have some of our own employees go out and help to provide some of this repair?
Very honestly, we're contemplating a lot of this, and it's probably a lot further along than it might seem tonight. What it seems tonight is that we just have a bunch of contracts we need to put in place because we need to put a stopgap in place to continue service on January 1st. We likely would have been in the position where we would have already gone to the market for subcontractors and for our own contracts in place, but for the opportunities that have potentially presented themselves with some more regionalization and intergovernmental agreement type approach with some of those things. For example, signs is a great example. So the fact that there are now some opportunities that also look to be reasonably cost-effective and attractive have caused us to make sure that we do a good thorough evaluation. Do we, we have the RFPs ninety-eight percent drafted that could go to the market to accomplish every bit of what we are talking about tonight. And if, in fact, after staff's professional recommendation, they say that is the best approach and the best route, we will pull the trigger on that direction. We might be bringing forward to you a different recommendation in a work session, been either, and we're probably looking towards January or February, very honestly. I mean, I think we're that far along in our evaluation, you know, there's a bunch of different options, and that's, you know, that's a neat position to be in. We want to make sure we pick the right one, and having said that, that's almost why we elected to a couple of weeks ago decide, you know, let's just keep in place what we have because we're not quite far enough along to tell the mayor and council, this is the right direction, but we will be very soon.
And I know that you guys have been working hard and looking at options, and again, you may have already done this. I know that one thing that might be helpful for myself and perhaps other members of council as we proceed with evaluating those options and perhaps before we terminate our contract with CH, I know that one thing that would be helpful for me would be to have an analysis that indicates with this particular subcontractor, how many times have we really needed, not so much the emergency services, but on a monthly basis, how often have we known that there have been resources that have gone out and replaced signs or done anything with signalization, just to get a better assessment of frequency and frequency relative to cost?
And we could provide that information. Those are work orders that we do track, and so we do.
I think that would be really helpful to have some summary data.
Okay. We can bring that forward as we present other alternatives.
Just helps us to know on a per-call basis, what sort of cost are we incurring.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a transition agreement with Georgia Management Agency, doing business as Roadworks.
I'll second it.
City of Milton, Georgia.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman, is ready for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
And by motion to vote, Mayor, council, last one, approval of a transition agreement by between the City of Milton, Georgia and Low Engineers LLC for engineering services. This is a contract that would allow us to transition in place with the traffic engineer that we have on staff at this point, Sarah Leaders, to give you, again, a name and a face. With the adoption of the Conference of Transportation Plan today, as well as several ongoing projects, I think it is in the city's best interest to continue the institutional knowledge here at City Hall that Sarah brings to the table. I believe Sarah has all the intentions in the world, at least at this point, remaining with Low Engineers, which is a fine decision, and I would like to keep Sarah here through a period of the transition as we decide exactly what we do with the transportation engineer position. This is one contract that is only five months, so it is a bit shorter than the ones we've already looked at. It terminates on May 31st, and this will allow us the time sufficient to transition the knowledge that she has to the person who will be the new person performing that function. This is within budget, within the budgeted, that position is budgeted in the budget, and it's funny you would come out of there. Any questions on this particular contract?
I was looking for the monthly fee on this and.
It's $12,000. It's on page eight, here at the bottom.
Just a quick question, Mayor, if I may. With some of these contracts, knowing that we also have a consultant that is working on providing some recommendations as it relates to public works, several of these contracts and the monies associated with them seem to have some similar scopes of work, and I know there's some distinguishment, but could you just speak briefly to potential of redundancy given some of the cost if we start to add up these dollars on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I don't think that we have any redundancy between this particular contract and the contract that we have with Mr. Jones, who's put together the, his deliverables and his tasks, which was put together the RFP, that would go to the market to replace these subcontracts.
Okay.
He has been very diligent in meeting the tasks and the deliverables that he has been assigned, to the extent that we are ready, if that is the right decision, to go to the market to secure new subcontractors, if that's the direction that we want to go. You know, sometimes you don't want things to get complicated, but in this particular circumstance, I'm glad they did get a bit complicated in that it looks like there's even more opportunity or even more cost savings that we can potentially have if we do a more localized approach with some of these services being provided by other governments. So, you know, he has met exactly the deliverables that we intended for him to meet, and we're ready to move forward if we have to, but there's really no similarity between what he's done and what Sarah Leaders.
Yeah, I was really meaning across a couple of these, since it's a combination of public works, et cetera, so I wasn't sure if Mr. Jones was only working on the RFPs up, this is, I think, before the timeline got reduced, that there was perhaps some other things contemplated, so I just wanted to make sure that amongst these five contracts, as well as those that are not before us this evening, that we don't have any redundancy given the cost on a monthly basis.
Do you have anything to add to that, and to help provide different services?
They really are kind of separate services, even though some of these cross over as far as right-of-way is concerned, we're looking at mark specialty when you're looking at signals and signs, and then right-of-way maintenance is really the general maintenance that we see out there every day. And so I think they have been separated so that there's not any redundancy, and it's really the way we've been operating for the past three years.
Right, and I know that we're in that transition phase, and we're trying to evaluate whether that's going to be internal versus potentially subcontracted, so thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a professional engineering services agreement between Low Engineers LLC and the City of Milton for a five-month duration.
I'll second the motion.
No, I'm sorry, I was talking to the attorney. Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Lawson, the second by Councilmember Thurman, is ready for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, move on to reports. One thing I want to ask, Mr. Kashi, are you representing the?
I'm here for the Milton, Maryland.
Milton, Maryland, so I want to welcome you here, same, same, same guy, different, different paper, but the floor is working with you for being here.
We've had to start wearing little name tags when we know where you're representing.
Hope everything goes well for you. Another thing I want to bring up, I just want to give my personal sincere sympathies as well as from the city too, for Councilmember Lawson, who was awesome this morning the other day, so I can't. Are there any reports, council? I just want to. Again, I would just want to reiterate, I'll just wish Councilmember Hewers a well, hope you're still involved with the city, hope you're still involved in some of our committees and whatnot, whatever you want to do with this. As Chris said, enough from my perspective, anything we can do, anything you can help out, we'd love to help with this. Thank you for all you've done.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you also for everything that you've done for the city. I learned a lot from you, and it's been an honor to serve with you and be your friend. So much love to you, and I know that life will look up to you, everybody will look to you.
Okay. Any staff reports?
Mayor, we have one tonight on the discussion of the MARTA offset funds, which is a more formal published staff report. That'll likely be all we have tonight in the next session.
Mayor, council, I was going to work from this map over here, so I'll talk to the side, but MARTA has made available a total of about $25 million to handle transit enhancements in this area, $6.25 million for the North Fulton area. Of that, Milton's share is $625,000. These funds are being made available 100% to the cities, no matching funds involved, with the caveat of the enhancement projects need to be made within a half-mile of existing bus routes. What we've provided to you tonight, this will be the initial discussion of this project. What we'd like to do is come back in January, probably, to the work session for a follow-up discussion, and then late in January with a resolution approving our project so we can move forward for ARC and MARTA to approve. Projects that we've been talking about and we've looked at within our half-mile radius, on the map that you have, the shaded version basically gives you the half-mile within the two bus routes that we have in the City of Milton. What we're proposing is our primary projects would be connection of sidewalks. We've got some over on McGinnis Ferry, Bethany, here at the corner of Webb and Deerfield, another section down Webb on the other side of Highway Nine, and then a small section of Cogburn Road, right along the city limits on the other side of Webb, or I'm sorry, on the other side of Cogburn. We had some alternative projects also that would be, could be considered, street lighting, we could continue the streetlights that currently run up to Webb, down Deerfield, and under this particular project, the funding would be approved almost Avonson. That additional section from Avonson over to Highway Nine would have to be a project funded by the city, and these funds can be used in conjunction with other city projects. They don't have to be used solely for those projects, so anything that enhances transit along those routes. And then another suggestion we had was bus shelters at selected locations along those routes. Those run anywhere from $15,000 to $30,000, depending on the design and depending on whether or not we want advertising on the shelters. So that's just a quick overview for you of these MARTA offset funds and the potential projects that would be available for use on those funds. I guess at the January work session, we'll leave you some time to digest that, and if there are any thoughts or comments at that work session, we can go over them before we move forward with determination on the final projects.
Ready? Karen?
I just have one quick question. A lot of these sidewalks are areas where if the properties were rezoned and developed, the developer would be required to put the sidewalk in. Is there any way for us to recoup the funds that they would have to be spending if they were required to put the sidewalk in from them at the time it's developed and, you know, I mean, basically, we're making it much easier on the developer because we're putting in the sidewalk that he would be required to put in at a later date when it was developed, and to use that money for sidewalks in other places?
Well, I don't know that we have a sidewalk bank, per se, at this point.
We do have one.
Then, well, then, I guess we have to look at the, what would require you to pay to the sidewalk bank if they're not going to put it in.
Yeah, but if it's already there, can we still require them to put it into the bank?
Right now, it's just.
No, I mean, the purpose of zoning is to require upgrades to ameliorate the impact of zoning. But we've already got those features there, we can't simply make you pay us for them anyway. The thing I would ask you to do is to figure out something else that you can have the developer do that would work to be an enhancement of the community, but I don't think.
But that would have to be on their own property, though, or we can't have them do stuff on other properties?
That's correct.
So what we may want to look at very carefully is what sidewalks we don't think would be, we would have to be paying for in the long term and make sure that those are the ones that we use the money for. And any sidewalks we think the development, land that may get developed in the short term, where the developer would be paying for those sidewalks, let us wait, but I don't know how the best way to do that is.
Well, in the way the, the way the item would be worded in the tip, it would give us some flexibility on these projects that we can take and move from one to another. If we decided to move forward with a whole million dollars' worth of projects, in other words, saying that we would be funding $400,000 of these projects, which are currently in progress, we would have the ability to go move that, move the money around in those various projects.
So we can go ahead and put together a list of more than the $600,000 and then spend it on whatever of that.
Mayor and council, the next item is the executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss potential land acquisition pending or possible litigation, and added by motion and vote personnel.
Motion second for this item.
Mayor, I'm adjourned to the executive session to talk about possible litigation, personnel, and land acquisition.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Park, second by Councilmember Thurman, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Ms. Yanis?
Time is eight twenty minutes.